I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
Good evening, everybody. If I could get everybody to grab a seat, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Orange County School Board and our meeting this evening. Tonight, we are recognizing the Central Florida Auto Dealers Association for their continued commitment to students at Mid-Florida Tech attending our automotive services technology program. For many years, the Central Florida Auto Dealers Association has been a tremendous partner of Orange County Public Schools. They've offered internships and employment to Mid-Florida students and graduates, and we are very, very, very grateful for that. Tonight, we are joined by Central Florida Auto Dealers Association President Raj Lally, Vice President Mike Smith, and somebody well-known to all of us, Executive Vice President Barbara Miller. If you could stand and please allow us to recognize you. Tonight, the CFAD will be announcing a major contribution to our students. But first, Ms. Miller, if you could step to the podium, please, and lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance with your colleagues. Thank you.
Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And now, Ms. Miller, I think is going to make a few comments to us and a special presentation. We're all yours, Barbara.
Would Raj and Mike please join me? As we announce a scholarship that is going to be donated from the Central Florida Auto Dealers Association to Mid-Florida Tech students. And we would like to congratulate Mid-Florida Tech on their 50th anniversary.
We are pleased to present, from the Central Florida Auto Dealers Association to the Orange County School Board, scholarship dollars totaling $10,000 to qualified Mid-Florida Tech automotive technology students. Qualified students are those working at one of our CFADA member dealerships as they advance their education at Mid-Florida Tech in either automotive service technology or the advanced automotive technology programs. The scholarship dollars will be delivered in stip ends to students who demonstrate financial need. Each student can receive up to $250 quarterly. The students can also reapply each quarter as needed. Barbara, would you like to?
Thank you. One of the greatest freedoms that we enjoy is the freedom of mobility. There are millions of vehicles on the road today that require maintenance and repair. The Bureau of Labor Statistics projects that the number of job openings at 30,000 annually for automotive technicians. Therefore, it's imperative that we give our time, our talents, and our financial support to the secondary and post-secondary automotive programs to keep them alive and current in the latest technology. Your support of the automotive programs in Orange County is greatly appreciated, and we thank you.
Mr. Lally, I don't know why it is, but everything said with a British accent sounds better. At this time, I'd like to invite up Dr. Mike Armbruster, Senior Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, Alex Heidelberg, Senior Director of Mid-Florida Tech, and Dr. James Ink, Assistant Director and the driving force behind the automotive technology programs. Please step up to the podium to accept this very generous contribution from the CFADA and their member auto dealers in Central Florida. And thank you again, on behalf of the Board, very, very much for your generosity to the students of Orange County. Thank you. Mr. Roach.
Yes, I wanted, before you leave tonight, I wanted to thank you over the years for the invitation to your auto show that you do each year. Are you still doing that?
Absolutely.
Because somehow, I've gotten lost on your mailing list for that invite.
That will be corrected.
I want to go this one last time, and it's always, I always try to bring a couple of my sons out there, but it's just a fabulous show to watch. And sometimes, I actually go and sit in one of your workshops and pay attention to what you're saying there, too. But it's just very well done and always very classy. But nevertheless, I wanted to talk to you again. We had a little situation last week, too, regarding the auto mechanics profession. But I just think it's just tremendous. These are the kind of opportunities that are out here for kids that choose not to go to a four-year college, and that's most of our kids. So I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity and that 30,000 jobs. We hope we fill every one of them. And every kid that wants a job in Central Florida's got one. That's what we'd like to have. So thank you again for coming. I look forward to that invitation.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since Mid-Florida Tech is District 5, all right? And we have to brag about it. We really just thank you over the years for what you have done. And I really hope that, I talked with Dr. Jenkins and also Mr. Morris, and we are on the corner of John Young and Oak Ridge Road, the building, but Dr. Ink and Mr. Heidelberg and Mr. Armbruster, our dream. And if I have anything to do with it, we talked about having our own major school there. And because we have the property, I talked to Dr. Jenkins, and when the sale tax pass, Mid-Florida Tech is in that. We will receive a brand-new facility, all right? And because of your commitment, Ms. Miller, you know, the media, I want you all to know that the media is here, not just for Mid-Florida Tech, but because of Ms. Miller. We just thank her for that, because you do so much. Raj, you do so much. I mean, all of you, working with us. And Alex is there now, and Mr. Armbruster's everywhere. He's just added so much to our technical school. But Dr. Ink, I want you to know that before you leave, and my dream, before I leave, which is no time soon, but before I leave, I really want you to know, we've already been talking to the superintendent. We've been talking to Mr. Morris. And I would really love to see you get totally involved in that center and be a part of the drafting of that building to include an expansion of that program. This is where we are going right now. This is what we are looking at. We're looking at bigger and better, even our own architectural design wing over there. You know, for all of our builders, that we want Mid-Florida Tech to be there. But you have been with us, the Central Florida Auto Dealer, from the very beginning, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And I would love to see your name in lights on that corner. Thank you so very much.
Ms. Gold.
Well, Mrs. Gordon, I don't know if you know this, but you're now my school board member as well, because my son started at Mid-Florida Tech this past summer with the C+ and computer networking, which, that's about all I can say about that, because that's all I know, is the title of that course. But I have to give you compliments and your investment over the years, because I was there for the, kind of, meet-the-teacher tour last week. And the energy and the excitement of our students there, and especially for the auto mechanics and the autobody, was amazing. It was really amazing to sit in the cafe and hear that and then see these kids. They can't wait to get up and find that teacher and go see where they're going to be learning. And it was refreshing and wonderful. And thank you for your investment and partnership in that.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Miller, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Lally. I have one personal selfish request, and that is, this year at the auto show, we need a new driver section of the floor, because I have a 16-year-old who's getting her first car. And she keeps driving down the road and saying, "Dad, I like that one. Dad, I like that one." I'm like, "Honey, that's a $70,000 car. You're not getting that one." Or, "That's a..." So we need to have a floor area for cheap cars for 16-year-olds. All right, if you'll do that for me, I'll be forever beholden to you. And with that, we'd like to present you a certificate of our appreciation. And I know all the Board members would like to shake your hands as well. All right, we're going to go ahead and proceed with our meeting. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. We do not have a strategic plan update tonight, members. But let me also announce to the crowd that anybody in the crowd who would like to address an item on our consent or a non-consent agenda may do so by filling out a speaker request form. It looks like this, a yellow card. You can obtain these yellow cards from Ms. McGill, who is a lady at the far-left-hand side of the dais. When that agenda item comes up, I will call on you to speak before the Board. And at that time, you will have three minutes to address the Board on the agenda item that you have signed up to speak before us on. If you have schedule constraints, please let us know, and we will do all we can to accommodate those. With that, Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to turn it over to you to do our favorite part of the meeting every week, which is to recognize our newly-appointed administrators. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. We have 10 tonight. I will start with Tiffany Barnes, who is Instructional Support for Adult and Community Education. She will be the new Assistant Director at Orlando Tech.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm just so humbled and thankful for this appointment of becoming the Assistant Director for OCPS Tech Center's Orlando Tech campus. Looking forward to join the administrative team, under seeing director Andrew Jenkins. And just want to thank Andrew for his support and mentorship over the years. Very quickly, I also would like to thank some of my other mentors that are here tonight. Senior Executive Director, Dr. Mike Armbruster, and Senior Director, Mrs. Rosa Grant, as well as our seeing directors, Mrs. Gents, Mrs. Lachaco, and Mr. Heidelberg. I also have my colleague and friend Precious Hill, that is here tonight with me. And so humbled and looking forward to serve more students. And I would be remiss if I did not thank my family and friends for their unwavering support. I have with me tonight my personal mentor, attorney Alan Holland, who is my uncle, as well as my cousin Daniel Holland. Thank you very much.
Then Kevin Duncan was Assistant Principal for Seminole County. He's coming to us as Assistant Principal at Apopka Middle School.
Thank you very much. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to introduce my wife, Erin Duncan, my mentor and really the reason for me being here. She's the one who pushed me to where I needed to be. And now she gets the blame. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Kelly Pelletier, my new principal at Apopka Middle School. I'm really excited to be back in Seminole, oh, sorry, back in Orange County. Sorry, sorry about that. And I can't wait to get to work on the behalf of all of our students here in Orange County, where all means all. Thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Durney-Austin, who is Resource Teacher at Apopka Middle. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Catalina Elementary.
I would like to say thank you to the Board. And I'd also like to thank you, some of my mentors, Dr. Kelly Pelletier, Sonia Warner, my husband Brian Austin, my father Keith Durney, Pam Clark, and my new family at Catalina Elementary, which is going to be Marlene and Everett Kimball. Thank you.
Marlene, I like the way they introduce your husband as part of your staff at Catalina. That's the way it goes around here. Thank you for, thank you for being here. Thomas Haynes is the Resource Teacher at Carver Middle School. He will be the new Assistant Principal at Evans High School.
I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Gibson Link and Dr. Gordon for giving me the opportunity. I want to especially thank my wife, Ingrid, and my wonderful son, Warren. And I have had some spectacular mentors throughout my career. Dr. Kent, Dr. Adams, Ms. Tiffany Smith, and, what's his name again? David Azerito? Yes. And thank you.
Andrea Holt was Resource Teacher at Waukesha High School. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Chain of Lakes Middle.
I would like to thank my lifelong friend and mentor for more than 25 years, Dr. Kim Dahl. Thank you to my other mentors, Pam Shatnew, Dr. Elise Gruber, Mrs. Michelle Erickson, who I didn't get a chance to work with very long, Kristy Drouse, and John Menderman for bringing me over the Lake County line into Orange County. And most of all, I want to thank my children, Austin and Caitlin.
Maribel Lebron was Administrative Dean at the Juvenile Detention Center. She will be the new Assistant Principal for the Beta School.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank, start thanking with my mentor, Mr. Tovine, my principal. He believed in me enough to accept me as Assistant Principal at our school's alternative education. Start there, also my mentors who have gotten me there, like, for example, Dr. Border, Mr. Green, Dr. Adams. I mean, I see people here that have touched me throughout my walk, getting here. And also Ms. Williams, Ms. McCray, Mr. Toffoli, all these people that have brought me to this place. And especially here, my sister, who's accompanied me. My parents are at home, but my sister's here. And my youngest, Erica. That's, I mean, this is the reason why I continue teaching, because I know I've, to get them to the point where they appreciate and enjoy this education, and that's why I want to continue for other children, like I've done for my family. And again, I want to thank God for writing this amazing chapter in my life, and I can't wait to see what it turns out to be. Thank you.
Nikisha Lovera was Resource Teacher at McCoy Elementary. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Forsyth Woods Elementary.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to start by saying thank you to all the school board members, Dr. Jenkins, our school superintendent and superintendent's staff. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I have with me tonight, of course, I'm joining Forsyth Woods Elementary School, so I have our principal, Mr. James Leslie. And with me is my father, who, he begged me to please mention that he is a retired New York City police officer. He has lived here in the Orlando area for almost 20 years. And if anyone knows how it is to transition from one place to another, I recently transitioned here from the state of Virginia. So I just wanted to say thank you to people in this room who have helped me progress with OCPS in the short time that I was here. He has been huge and instrumental in my transition period. So I just wanted to publicly thank him for everything that he has done for me. Everything and anything. My father has been there for me. So I wanted him to participate in this opportunity with me tonight. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sherri Snar, Resource Teacher at Ventura Elementary. Will be the new Assistant Principal at Camelot Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the school board, especially Darryl Flynn, who's been with me for many years and watched me as I've gone through this process. I'd also like to thank Dr. Irazari, who's my new principal at Camelot. We're the A-team. We're going to learn a lot. And Dr. Hannaf, my mentor from Cypress Springs, without whom I could not have had the confidence to do this. I'd also like to thank my husband, Bill, my daughter Paige, my son Ian, and my dearest friend in the world, Seal, who have supported me and told me, "You can do this," throughout this entire process. I'm really excited, and hey, I got the keys to Camelot. Woo!
Alela Vasquez Santiago is Administrative Dean at Union Park Middle. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Apopka Elementary.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Jenkins and staff. I am very honored and humbled to be here tonight. I would like to start by saying thank you to my wonderful family who is here today. My mom, Millie, my dad, Louise, my sister, Melissa, Johnny, my brother-in-law, my niece, Kiara, my nephew, Daniel, and my wonderful husband, Joey, my rock and support who has been there for me all the time. Thank you to my wonderful family. I have been blessed with a wonderful team of mentors which have been there for me every step of the way. My wonderful principal, Ms. Sandy Salma, which I'm going to miss dearly. My wonderful mentor, Mr. Jerome Thompson, Dr. Sonia Warner. Thank you so much for all your support and advice. You guided me. To all my colleagues and friends from my previous school, from Zellwood Elementary and from Ridgewood Park. Thank you for being here tonight. And to my new principal, Ms. Miller, to Dr. Gordon and Dr. Jarra for giving me this opportunity. I am ready to be part of the Dolphin Dynasty. And I will give 200% of me in order to lead our students and our school to success. Thank you.
Finally, we have Scott Whittle, who was an adult education teacher at Westside Tech. They will be the new Interim Assistant Director at Westside Tech.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the OCPS chairman and the school board members. I'd like to thank the Superintendent Jenkins and her staff. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Armbruster for this tremendous opportunity. Also, I'd like to thank Anita Gents, Senior Director at Westside Tech, and Crystal Davidson, and Dr. Mike Painter for all of their mentorship. It has meant the world to me. I'd also like to thank my family members. I'd like to thank Dick Dameron, longtime, longtime high school principal, Oak Ridge High School. I'd like to thank Sharon Dameron, my mother. She works at Mid-Florida Tech. I'd like to thank my wife, Allison, my best friend. This is a tremendous time. Thank you very much.
I think you can see why we love this part of the meeting so much. What great speeches, what great comments. Mr. Roach.
Nikisha, I just want to wish you the very best, and thank you for all your service over at McCoy. And I thought that was her husband next to her. He looks so young. That's her father. Isn't that a good-looking guy right there? And somebody beat me to the punch, but when I saw just an old friend of mine that I really admired when I was growing up, and that's Dick Dameron from Oak Ridge High School, retired principal. And Kat, I know Kat loves him, too, but he's just a guy that, when I was teaching, always looked up to Dick. And he was well-liked by so many people. But Dick, good to see you again. Really, you made my night.
Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to welcome several of you to District 7, and in particular, Kevin Duncan at Apopka Middle School. What a beautiful facility. And I know, great things have been coming out of that school in the last couple of years. And just so very excited about you joining the family there. And then, and I'm going to help me with her name. Is it Aleah Vasquez Santiago? Is it? Ali? Okay. Well, I have a good friend, Vasquez. I can remember that part. She's going to make sure I get that right, isn't she?
You can't roll an R either, can you?
Probably not. But welcome to Apopka Elementary. And it's just a great year that we're going to have. And that's such a tight community, with three schools named after the town. And football starts Friday night. And so I'm sure very quickly, you're going to find out what it's like to be a Blue Dartor. So welcome.
Mrs. Robinson.
I was thankful that I got to meet Mr. Haynes before the meeting tonight. But I, too, just wanted to say publicly, I'm so excited that you're joining the Evans crew. I don't have to tell you, it's a great place. And I know I'll get to see you around, because I get to come out and have fun with the Trojans all the time. So congratulations and best wishes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Well, I know Rick Roach. I don't know if I want to say, "I'll miss him when he's gone," or whatever. But stealing my thunder, but that tells you something about District 5. But I wanted to say, welcome to Tiffany Barnes. God bless you. And we just love you and wish you the best, you know, in your career. And then I do want to just thank Michelle for coming over. I hadn't had an opportunity to meet you, but I know about your background. Okay? So I hope that we get to meet. But you're with a great person over there. And you will be with the great Catalina, so, which is with Marlene Kimball. And her husband, Dr. Jenkins, I wanted to say, he is a part of the staff. Okay? I don't think I've ever been to anything where he was, he's always there, isn't he? I don't think he misses anything. So he should get the, when we do the awards for the Catalina School, I'm sure that he'll have all the men. And that's another thing. He did something that was extraordinary at Catalina. And I wanted you to say, because with the President Obama's, my brothers' keepers at Dr. Jenkins had an opportunity to go and ask me to go, and Mr. Sublet could not attend. But they were talking about men of color. And I want you to see an event, just to be able, what they did with their daughters at Catalina Elementary, where the fathers and the daughters actually just took over. It was like a prom for the elementary students, but it wasn't. It was a father-daughter building relationship. And it was one of the things that touched me the most. Fathers presented their girls, and he was a part of that and played a major part. And it's an annual event. So I think you see me tearing up. So if you can ever get a chance to see men in action, usually the women take over the elementary school. But at Catalina, pretty much the men. So he is a part, and we thank you. We don't want you to believe, we don't, Dr. Jenkins, I didn't give you a dime. Because they'll say you're getting paid. You know that, Pastor. They'll say you're being paid. But he's not being paid, but we just thank you. So I did want Michelle to know, you're going in a good family, and they'll take very good care of you. And like Rick mentioned, it's no way in the world that I cannot have Mr. Dameron to stand. Mr. Dameron, will you please stand? We would not be where we are at Oak Ridge if it was not for Mr. Dameron. Before leaving, he, we met, well, we knew each other before, because I worked with him as a counselor at Oak Ridge. So when he came to me, he told me, "Now, Kat Gordon, I don't want you to be loud at the graduation." Now, y'all know how I am at the graduation. Mr. Dameron has never been the same. I think that last graduation, when you retired, he was hollering on the stage. But I want you to know, he gave me a list. Most people, when they retire, Dr. Jenkins, they want out of there. But he gave me a list of things that he would like to see happen at Oak Ridge. That was one of the cleanest campuses, Mr. Morris, I had ever seen. And I told him that we were going to destroy the whole campus, and he almost had a fit. Now, Kat, all you need to do is just take down these two or three buildings, and we'll be, we'll be all right. But when it came to getting Oak Ridge done, he went back and got Rick Chikrati, and, I mean, just so many others that graduated from Oak Ridge that did not come before. And they really got with us to help us. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And they are always at the games. They are supporting us with the alumnis. And Mr. Dameron, I salute you as a former principal, administrator, and coach in Orange County Public Schools. And thank you for being here tonight to see that one of your administrators moved up to the top. So, Dr. Jenkins, thank you for that. And thank you for that kind of support. That's the kind of man you are. Talk to you later about that.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate everyone. And I think for our new Apopka Middle AP. When you say "all means all," we just remarked how we liked that. So "all means all." I think that's a good slogan. And the other thing is, if you have never been to a graduation with Mrs. Gordon, you have to put that on your bucket list. I'm taking lessons from her for next year's graduations, so, speaking. So thank you.
Armbruster and Gordon production.
Well, again, congratulations. I'm going to do something I do every board meeting when we recognize our administrators. Can I have all the young children? I think Austin and Caitlin may have stepped out. Austin, Caitlin. Erica, all our young children, stand up, because this is not an easy meeting to sit through. And stand up and let us give you a hand and take a bow.
Look at the baby back there.
Also, I don't usually do this, but I want to go off script for a moment, too. One of the most important positions in Orange County Public School are principals, and I say that because frankly, folks, when things go wrong, they get all the blame, but when we excel as a school district, they get far too little of the credit. So can I have all of our principals who are here with us tonight stand and let us recognize you as well?
That's right, Mr. Jenkins.
Y'all work very hard, and we want you to know that we recognize that and want to thank you and your entire teams for your hard work. Let me close by saying this. I always share with newly-appointed administrators that this appointment, from the board's perspective, can really be boiled down to one singular word, and that is the word "trust." And I say that because your appointment signifies our trust in your educational leadership, it signifies our trust in your judgment, and most importantly, it signifies our community's trust in placing our children and their future in your hands. So your loved ones, your friends, your family should be very, very proud of your accomplishment tonight. Thank you. Have a great week, have a great first week of school, and I used to say, go buy the kids ice cream, but we have new nutrition guidelines, so go buy the kids nonfat, low-fat yogurt and enjoy your evening. We're gonna pause for a minute.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, I just saw Mr. Jenkins from Orlando Tech back there. That's District 5.
All right, let's go ahead and progress with our meeting. First of all, I've noticed that our friends, our colleagues from the Orange County Council of PTAs are here with us this evening. Madeline, thank you for your and your team for all you do for Orange County Public Schools. We appreciate it. All right, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda?
We do. Mr. Chairman, we are withdrawing three items. 901, Memo of Understanding with OCPS Regarding Princeton House Charter School. Withdrawing item 902, that is a contract with UCP of Central Florida, and withdrawing 1403, that is a settlement and release agreement regarding Oak Ridge High School. Those three items will be brought back at a later date for the board.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. I find cause to amend the agenda as suggested. Can I have a motion to do so?
Move it.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon, seconded by Ms. Gould and Ms. Cadel. Is there any discussion or debate of that motion? Saying none, all those in favor of amending the agenda suggested, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll oppose nay. Show the agenda amended. All right, we do not have any items on our public hearing agenda tonight, so we're on agenda item four, which is four through actually 13, which are four through 14, our consent agenda, and we do have two speakers on our consent agenda tonight. One is Ms. Cindy Hamilton, somebody well-known to us. Welcome, Ms. Hamilton. And you know the drill, you'll have three minutes to address the board. If you could start, please, Cindy, with your address for the record, and then we're all yours.
Cindy Hamilton, my address is 4199 Tommaso Court, Orlando 32812. Do we have a graph of, or graphic for the platform that we were gonna put up? No?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right.
We have it in front of us in our board materials.
Okay, all right. As I review this legislative platform, I see 10 items referring in some way to funding. I see six items referring to school choice and charters. I am looking for anything that demonstrates the board's commitment to limiting mandated assessments that do not involve multiple measures and that will inform instruction for the current year. In principles, you have stated all major state educational initiatives should have effective dates that will allow adequate time for data analysis and implementation. This is great. You have shown that you disagree with current laws and policy of FLDOE to implement a new set of measurements that have yet to be tried here in Florida. In the past, when parents have addressed this board, we were told that the board must follow and support the law and policy outlined by FLDOE. You have in many instances directly challenged current law on this platform, specifically as it relates to charters in item number seven, as we already have laws allowing per-student funding to be paid to charters. While I commend you on your get-tough language regarding public dollars going to for-profit charters, I find the language in item number two to be weak. In priorities number two, you support an approach to state accountability that minimizes the number of required assessments for all students. It is not just the number of tests, although with added EOCs, it is over the top, but it is the tests themselves that have parents in an uproar. You know this, and we have addressed it many times. However, you fail to make it a priority here to have our children or our students assessed using multiple measures that will inform instruction. We want our teachers and their evaluations to be part of those multiple measures. Again, in number two, you address minimizing the state requirements, but the district itself has test requirements to fill a large portion of the testing calendar. How will you minimize your own requirements, and will you control some of this testing madness by making district EOCs worth as little as possible? You have that power, and it's your decision. Authentic assessment is our priority for our students. Parental rights to make these decisions is our priority. I ask that you adjust the language of item number two and not merely support an approach, but support action to change current legislation to require multiple measures of assessment. I also ask that you eliminate all tests not mandated by the state to support your own language in the platform. You have been elected to represent us while you created this legislative platform. OCPS, the institution, is represented here in this document, but the children and families of OCPS are not. While I appreciate the compromises that were involved in writing the legislative platform, what we have here is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. We have another speaker this evening on the platform, somebody well-known to us, Ms. Tammy Weaver. Ms. Weaver, welcome. If you could begin with your address, please.
Tammy Weaver, 1503 Sawyerwood Avenue, Orlando, Florida 32809. Good afternoon, Chair Sublett, school board members. Dr. Jenkins, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. Again, my name's Tammy Weaver, past president of the Orange County Council of PTAs, PTSAs, past state committee member for the legislation committee, and currently, my title is vice president of regions and councils for Florida PTA. I speak in support of the proposed state platforms as PTA's mission aligns with what is being addressed. Florida PTA is focused on providing hundreds of thousands of our members throughout the state factual information on current issues affecting public education today. We ask you to continue to bring parents, key stakeholders, to the table when issues regarding children's education are being discussed. This will benefit all of us. We know we have work cut out for us, but I'm confident our members in Orange County are up for the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. All right, board members, I don't have any other speakers. Mr. Roach.
Mrs. Flynn, may I ask you just how, I know that we are, in October, I believe it is, we're bringing forward the resolution that the board adopted in 2012 back. Would you just explain that as to how, what that is about, the procedure, the board's values regarding that, and is that an update kind of thing? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Ms. Flynn, do you want to yield to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, it was a suggestion that I was, or a recommendation that I was gonna bring to the board today. We've spoken, I'd spoken with it about our resolution in 2012, which was our resolution on accountability and testing. We passed that in 2012, and Mr. Howard suggested that, when we were talking about, that this still speaks for us as a board, that we could bring it back for reauthorization. We could tweak it, bring it up to meet some of the newer changes in legislation. Again, it would have to be decided on by this board, but that resolution, as you remember, from us called on the governor, Florida Legislature, and the State Board of Education to contract with a qualified independent entity to conduct a thorough and fully transparent independent review and evaluation of Florida's accountability system. I'm not gonna read everything. Revised the accountability system to include data from multiple forms of assessment and limited standardized testing, and also allow future revisions to the accountability system to be phased in over time to ensure adequate time for teachers and students and parents administrator to fully understand. So we do have that as a approved position from this board. I think it would be appropriate for us to bring it back, because, Mrs. Gould, were you here when we did it the first time? I don't think so. I think it would be appropriate for us to come back and reauthorize it. And so, Mr. Chair, that was something I was gonna ask you as chairman, if we could put that back on the agenda. But it does speak to some of the items that Mrs. Hamilton spoke of when she just gave us her presentation. I also wanted to say, too, that this was a collaborative approach among school board members for these principles and priorities, and some, while they think the wording is limited, allows us to incorporate, it doesn't pin us down with too many specifics. I mean, the idea that I always learned about principles and priorities when you're doing a legislative platform is you keep them a little bit general, because it allows you to speak to more issues as a board when you have them in this type of state, so. And there was compromise, there was compromise among us, and we all don't think alike, so this allows all of us to speak as a united front on legislative issues that we agree in totality.
Let me go to Mrs. Gordon, and then I'll address your inquiry, Ms. Flynn.
Then address it while it's on my.
If you'd like, yeah. You know, my predilection in these issues, any board member, whoever wants any item agenda, will get their item agenda before this board. So if you want to have it re-agenda'd as an item and for a revote or reaffirmation of it, we'll get it re-agenda'd. If you want us to re-address it, my suggestion would be to take it back into your committee, your legislative committee, and take up the resolution in committee, which is what we did before. So if you're inclined to do some tweaking of the resolution or some changes to the resolution, I think that's best done in a committee setting as opposed to trying to do it up here at a board table, because, you know, members of the audience should know that when we passed the original resolution, and I'm looking at Ms. Moore and Mrs. Robinson and Ms. Cadel, if I'm not mistaken, we probably spent five to six hours alone discussing and debating the language in that resolution. I think it was two full meetings. So we certainly do have eight independent viewpoints up here on this board, and I would probably guess that if you draw fine distinctions, we probably have eight distinct opinions on the issues addressed in the resolution. So it was a lot of work, so I'll leave it up to your pleasure. If you want to bring it back into committee first and fine-tune it, then that's fine. If you just want to bring it up as is for a reaffirmation, board members, speak up if anybody would object to us reaffirming it in its current language. I certainly would not. I don't know that anybody else would, but that's your prerogative to have it agenda'd. Okay, Mrs. Gordon?
And just let us know, because I think this is why we have the open forum here, and we're speaking. I wanted, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if this should be the superintendent, Ms. Cindy Hamilton, I'm gonna need her back up to the microphone for clarification, and then Mrs. Scott Howard, Dr. Jenkins, can I address to him before, and then if he can't handle it, then you would answer it? Okay.
Definitely, and let me just make an announcement, and Mrs. Hamilton, I know would be willing to, but we treat speakers like we do board members. Nobody has to come back up to the podium to answer a question, but I figured you'd probably be willing to, Ms. Hamilton, so.
But I don't want her to take over, because I, don't take it over. I just want you to help me with this. Okay, I really felt that number two, the only one I had a little concern was, number two. I think, and anything that you can add that would help us make it a little bit more powerful, help us, because it's not in goal yet, it's not approved in goal, but if you're saying, just help me understand, when we say "support an approach to state accountability that minimizes the number of required assessments for all students," I know it might sound a little weak, but we are one in 61, 67? We are one of the 67 counties. Have you done any legwork to get the other school boards on board with this? Just a yes or no answer, because I got other questions. Don't, please, yes and no, this is what I was just telling you. You either did or you didn't.
Yes.
Okay. Who did you do it through?
We are working with Lee County and their board member, Donnie Armstrong.
So that's one. You're working with another county, but you didn't, that's not the other 66?
I'm confused about your question.
And I'm confused about yours. That's why you're at the mic for me, because I'm totally confused.
I didn't ask a question, though.
But I am. If you don't want to answer, you could return, like the chairman said. I'm just trying to get you to help us get a better language here to get to the point you're trying to make. So either you have to convince us or me so that I can vote for what you're asking for.
Okay.
We'll go back to the drawing, but I don't want it, I don't want a major discussion. I just wanted you to tell me, you gave me one county out of the 67. Okay? Because I'm trying to figure out who you've been working with. This is not a county, this is not one-county approach, this is state stuff. This is Department of Education, State House, state representatives. Have you contacted all of the representatives? Yes or no? I gotta get this, because I need to understand where she's coming from.
No.
Okay, okay. Have you contacted your senator?
Yes.
Okay. How did your senator feel about this?
I didn't get a response.
Okay, thank you. That's, and I thank you for that. Now you see where I'm coming? Okay, when you say, on this, it says "support an approach," and then you said, "Well, I think you should support actions."
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you said, "Not just the numbers." What is it you're asking us to do? What are some of the actions that you would like to see us do that we can put in this? Because we're trying to win this war with you. We're not against you, baby, we're with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what you say "support actions," we said "approach," but we were looking at approach as many actions. So what particular action do you want us to put in here that would help you feel better that we understand what it is you're trying to say that we didn't say here?
Okay, what we would like is for multiple measures to be used to assess students that inform instruction of the current year.
Okay, so you're trying to tie it with the teacher evaluation program.
No, ma'am. It has nothing to do with teachers.
But you mentioned the evaluation and the testing madness, so you gotta help me. I hear, I'm a teacher, so I'm hearing things, and it's not coming together.
Okay. When we speak of multiple measures, we would like teachers to have an input into the multiple measures. We would like the weight of what the teacher believes the student has accomplished to be equal to whatever tests they're being given.
Okay, now, would you like this board to do tonight? Would you like us, have you met with Mr. Scott Howard?
Yes, I have.
Okay, have you met with Mr. Daryl Flynn?
Yes, I have.
Okay, is it a reason why they not putting that in there?
No, when we, when we met, it was what Ms. Flynn discussed, the broad language of the line item, so that they could address issues to not disclude or include what it is that I was, what I, what our goal is.
So what is it that you would want us to change in this that we could take back to the committee and the group and discuss?
We would like to include an action to support multiple measures in Florida assessment.
And what are some of those multiple measures? Because I teach, and I don't want any more measures. And I think you know what I'm talking about.
It's not, it's not, we already have measures that we can include.
But can you list what you're talking about, even if you gave an example?
Sure.
Because that's very broad.
Absolutely. If you were to use Lexile score in regards to testing students for their reading ability...
And you know I'm a librarian?
No.
I am. Very familiar.
You can know everything about you, Kat.
Well, you know that now, you know, I know about the Lexile.
Right, so if you were to use Lexile scores, teacher-develop portfolios, and I mean teacher-develop portfolios, not the CD the state provides, along with assessments that the teachers themselves develop for the class that they're teaching.
Okay.
So that would be three.
All right, now, how would this help to alleviate the testing madness?
So, if you were to use Lexile scores, teacher-develop portfolios, and I mean, teacher-develop portfolios, not the CD the state provides, along with assessments that the teachers themselves develop for the class that they're teaching.
Okay.
So, that would be three.
All right. Now, how would this help to alleviate the testing madness? And how would it help to alleviate the accountability of the number of tests that we have to give? Orange County gave four pages. Osceola gave three. The only reason why I went back, I said, "Well, why is it that Orange had four pages of testing beginning this month? Fair." Why is it that we only had three? Guess what? Fair and AR wasn't on that.
Right.
Okay.
Well, what I would like.
But they are adding it.
This conversation we're having right now, in the way that I'm addressing you, is in regards to not having one test that has too much weight on it, which would be the FCAT or FSA.
And I think we can work that out.
Right. And so, if you want to talk about the other point that I made in regards to too many tests?
Yes.
My request is that this board and that Orange County Public Schools eliminate all testing that's not mandated and that does not inform instruction. As you said, we have four pages of tests.
Yes.
And we have many that are mandated by the state, either the FSA and FCAT or the state-written EOCs. But we also have district benchmark testing that takes, also takes away instruction time. And if it doesn't inform instruction according to the teacher, then we need to get rid of it.
Okay. And I thank you so much. Thank you. Wasn't that wonderful?
It was fun.
Yes. And you got your point across, and I understand.
Yes.
Okay. I think the chairman's suggestion was a good one, but I do believe that Mr. Howard, if you could come up and address some of those if you want to, you know, she knows what I'm talking about with the little summary of it. I think that some of the things that Ms. Hamilton is talking about is workable, but it's not with just the school board. And Mr. Sublet mentioned it. It's not a thing that we, I think Lee County got in trouble. They said they were going to do what? And I'm going, "Oh, my God. Are they constitutional officers? My Lord. They just vowed that what they were going to do and all that basically was against what we raised our hand and vowed that what we would do as much as we can to follow it." Will you address just one or two areas of where we are going in that direction, please?
And before you answer that, Mr. Howard, Ms. Flynn, can I ask you a question? Is our resolution anywhere on our board docs or in our, on the home page? Where is it at? So, we can pull it up while he's answering.
Well, it's on board docs. 4.02.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Howard? If you find it, Darryl, just tell me where is it?
4.02.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 no. I mean, the testing resolution we passed in 2012 is what I'm asking about.
Deborah probably can pull it up for us.
Yeah. If you can find it, Deborah, let me know. Mr. Howard?
Sure. Madam Vice Chair, I think the purpose of the platform today was to simply lay out the principles and priorities of this board moving forward. I think that, as Mrs. Flynn spoke of, as far as the resolution that we passed in 2012, to bring that back and reaffirm that before the board and maybe make some adjustments based on new policies, new statutes that have been added since 2012 in order to address that within that document would be, you know, would be the way to go to be more specific in that area. And I think the chairman said it well. I think it was a couple of meetings of vetting that document and moving through each whereas clause to make sure that it truly captured what all eight board members collectively wanted to say to the legislature and to the department in regards to accountability and testing.
Okay. Very good. I think you kind of summed up where we are on that, and I think the suggestion that the chairman suggested on that, Mr. Howard, and we thank you for what you do, you know, to try to bring everybody together. I believe that this is something workable when Mrs. Flynn and her committee gets back together, that we can try to correlate because we are hearing what everybody is saying. And I think the quoted word, the testing madness, is kind of getting to you because, as I stated in that work session we had that day, we all know, and the word in our school is, "Hey, utilize August because in February, we're through." So, that means we have to cover every standard, and they're not even scheduled to be covered until April, May, and June. April, May, and June is too late for Ms. Tammy Weaver's child. Ms. Tammy Weaver's child has got to get all those standards in by February because if she does not get those standards in by February, and they don't know those standards, they will not be able to get them. So, the testing, we know it's a lot, but are we willing to take back what she said when Ms. Flynn's meet and gets Chairman Sublet suggesting that we can try to correlate and put it in the kind of word, I think they're kind of toughening it up a little bit, like no nonsense, but I wouldn't want to do like Lee County because you cannot go against, openly you can go against, but once you're sworn in as constitutional officers, it's very hard to kind of go against what you said you were going to do. So, would that be something workable after you've heard what she's said today and what we are trying to get the wording in a little bit more tougher and powerful? Ms. Flynn?
Flynn?
Could it be possible? Yes. But is it a discussion that we need to take further into what is minimum? I mean, how many tests? The request to eliminate any multiple testing, that discussion goes beyond this evening. That's a completely different discussion. For accountability that minimizes the number of required assessments, that is an evolving number, I think, but we would need more discussion to pinpoint how many. Is it none? Is it all? I'm not sure that we're there yet. By session, maybe we will be. I do want to say that we try to time the approval of these platform items so that we can submit them to Florida School Board Association and that they have the benefit of having our platform items when they develop theirs. So, we are running close to a time crunch on that. So, I think the discussion of revising that statement is one that I can't make for myself. I will say that, based on some input that Mrs. Gould had for Mr. Howard, we did change, one, two, three, four, five, number six on the principles. I just want to put this in. I know I'm segueing a little bit. I'll come back to the original thing. But it does say, "Major educational initiatives should have effective dates to allow adequate time." Initially, we had adequate time for implementation, and we did add for data analysis and implementation." That one came from Mrs. Gould to Mr. Howard, and I think that's the only change that we've made since we had our work session. I just wanted to put that in so everybody's recognizing it.
And may I ask this? I believe that's what, if I can get it out, I think that's what you're talking about, Ms. Hamilton, right?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hamilton.
The part that she mentioned on the.
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Come back again. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming up. And I want to commend Mrs. Gould for this. This is awesome, for the time for data analysis. But remember, we don't set anything, and that's where Dr. Jenkins will come in. We get our audits from the, you know, they have a testing program up there in the State Department. We opt to do some of it. So, that's where we all have to get together. Did you hear, Ms. Flynn, what she mentioned, that Ms. Pam Gould added, to make that a little bit tougher and to pinpoint it a little bit without putting a number on it?
I'm sorry. Ms. Flynn, were you referring to principle number six?
Yes.
It's the last one. On principles, you're right.
But she made it a little bit tougher by adding that.
I have that already. I actually have the copy of that she's referencing because it was updated on board docs, but that was what I have. So, yes.
Okay.
And this, this number six is what I said, this is great that you did this because you're recognizing that the state isn't giving us enough time.
Right.
And I commend you on that one. That's great. I have no issue with that item.
So, how would you feel if, I heard Ms. Flynn said, with the committee, there is a timeline that we need to get these up there? And if we, I mean, we could move at the table, Mr. Chairman, and if there's something that we needed to add. But would that not cover it? Because that's the principle, and then it goes into the priority. So, would that not, that can be an argumental point that we can use with that powerful statement there.
You talk about making it more powerful. What was added was data analysis.
Right.
Which, to me, is time to consider. And I understand, but to me, that's a separate issue from number two. This is about implementation of, I'm assuming, the new standards. And then, number two is about accountability and testing. It's a separate issue. You have standards, and you have accountability and testing. I don't see that those two are the same.
They are because the testing, that's where it all comes from. You and I are there every day. We're working on that data.
I understand. But in my mind, and this is just my interpretation, is that when you're talking about educational initiatives and effective dates, those aren't tests. Those are standards that are being addressed in number six. Am I wrong?
Well, not wrong, but I think you need to think a little deeper. That, when you get those dates, those dates are our tests, looks what's sitting on our desk. Today, we were all into the data stuff, trying to find out, let's get our tests, let's see what's going to happen, what we need to cover. And it all came from the statement that is made up here in number six. It's all reflection on the priorities.
Again, I'm just going to state that I believe that number six and number two address two different issues. And for me, I think we need stronger language in number two. I understand what you're talking about in regards to the deadlines that this platform needs to be presented to the School Board Association. I understand.
Well, will you do me a favor? Since you're working with other groups, is there any way that you could get that information tomorrow to Ms. Flynn's committee? Just get it to her?
What information exactly?
The one that you said, the stronger language, so that you will be able to take a look at it.
I can do that.
Okay. And then, Ms. Flynn, you might have to have Scott to get it to us very quickly and give some kind of, okay? Because I need to know, this is very important what she's saying, because I'm sitting here wearing two hats. One, as a classroom teacher, having to do this every day, which can be hectic. Then, you have the state guidelines that we have to follow. Some of this you could get rid of, some of we cannot get rid of.
Right.
But we can address it.
Yes.
Okay? And that's what we need to do. So, I think the board is not getting, and we're not getting completely from you. It's here. But if you put it in writing for us, because I haven't seen yours in writing yet, if you could put it in writing in some kind of way, Deborah McGill, Mr. Chairman, or the superintendent can authorize Deborah to get it to us, and then even if we have to just send back some kind of consensus and agreement on it and check with Scott to make sure we're not violating anything, I don't think it's a big deal, you know, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's do this. If you would, Vice Chair Gordon, let me go to Ms. Flynn because she's been queued up and waiting for quite a while. Then, I'm going to go to Mr. Roach and Ms. Moore, and then maybe you can punch your bun and queue back up. And, you know, at the end of the day, Ms. Flynn, let me just throw this out as a suggestion. We have another board meeting in three weeks. I don't know when the PTA needs their information by or the FSBA, but the FSBA, I should say, but we got a long time till the March legislative session.
I would like to thank Ms. Gordon because you asked me what I wanted, and it's only the third time in 15 years I've ever been asked that by the board. So, my shock was why it took me so long to answer because I just did not anticipate somebody asking me, "What do you want?" So, thank you very much for that.
Well, we, no, we thank you because we see you as, we know who you are as an educator. We just need to get what, everybody's not there. I couldn't begin to tell people what it's like going back into that classroom Monday with those children. We had a week without them, and I think everybody's in the second day. And it's either been a good day or a medium day or a, oh, here they come day. And then, you look at the load of data and all of, everything sitting on our desk is the testing schedule. And I'm involved in most of that, and I give all of the end of course and we're giving all the FCAT. I know what that is like. It is overwhelming. So, you, as a person that's doing this, can give us light. We can write it, but writing it and not experiencing it, it's two different things. So, you've shed quite a bit of light here to help us see that other side, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Flynn, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Here's what I would like to suggest. I think Ms. Hamilton brings up, you know, some very good points. We discussed it in a meeting, and so, I think we're there. But what I'd like to have is not a rushed discussion on what the minimum number of tests we want. No, no, no.
I don't want a minute.
Well, what I want is a little bit more of an idea from educators for what the law, you know, what fits what we have. Because on this board, we don't have, I don't think we have general consensus that each and every one of us wants no test or we have too many. But I will tell you, for me to get a committee meeting between now and then, you know, I'm a little distracted right now on some other things, but here's what I'd like to do. Let's pass this. Like you said, March is still somewhat time away. Let's have a good work session on testing and assessments. You know, my son went through fifth grade with a portfolio assessment. I got my, you know, opinion on that. But let's have a good discussion on that because I think by this, we all realize that there might be too many. But is this board ready to say, "None"? I don't think we have that general consensus. So, I'd like to suggest that we pass this and then have another, I'm repeating myself, but that's what I'd like to suggest and see what everybody thinks about it.
Mr. Roach?
Well, I think Mrs. Hamilton has gotten plenty of accolades here tonight, but I will just tell you, what I would like to say is for the board to understand what a very valuable constituent she is. And, you know, I think I've been fortunate. There's not a whole lot of people that I really don't like in my district. I like them all. Some of them are a little bit high maintenance than others. But when Cindy Hamilton talks, I will tell you that she's very well-grounded, not only in knowledge, but in numbers of people that come through her. I always prided myself on having people that were comfortable talking to me. She probably talks to four times as many people as I do. People come to Cindy, and they tell her what's going on with schools and what they're concerned about, and she helps them. She doesn't stir the pot. She helps them, and that's what I appreciate so much about Cindy Hamilton. The board has asked on a number of occasions when parents have come to us and had issues about Tallahassee, they've said, "You need to speak to the other parents and get them activated. Tallahassee doesn't listen to us." If we had dozens and dozens like Cindy Hamilton, we probably would have a lot of laws changed, and that's the truth. She really is very, very strong that way. So, I want to tell you what I think I hear you say, Mrs. Hamilton, with multiple measures, and see if I've got this correct. When I go to Tallahassee, and I've gone the last couple of years and met with representatives and senators, I usually am met by an aide who says, "Mr. Roach, you have 15 minutes with the senator." And I always say to them, "I just need four, four minutes." And I come in, and if I talk about testing, I use one of our issues, which is multiple measures versus a single measure. And of course, that really doesn't strike a whole lot of understanding among the legislators by itself. So, I take these charts with us. I'm known as the chart guy, for God's sakes. I at least shrunk them down smaller so I didn't carry many billboards with me. But I show them three or four posters, and what I show them is that the school boards are asking for multiple ways to assess our kids in our schools. We think that's a fair thing to say, and I think this board thinks it's a fair thing to say. And Mrs. Gordon asked a good question, what are the multiple measures? And probably, as educators, we probably could sit down in five minutes, and she and I could put down the multiple measures that we assess kids with. So we have a lot of different ways to do it. But one of the areas that I show them, I show them, and Pearson may not be in the picture for a while now, but for the last 16 years, we've given Pearson a lot of money. And Pearson says, they have a disclaimer on their package, and so I tell them, before DOE buys this test, this is what Pearson says, and that is, do not use this test alone. It should be used with other measures. I'm not using the exact language, I actually have it on a poster, but don't use it with other measures, use it as a part of the evaluation process, and don't forget about professional judgment. That's their disclaimer. Why would they say that? I talked to our attorney about that. I said, legally, what are they doing here? He said, they're probably protecting themselves, because they don't want this test to be used in a way that it's not designed to be used. So I thought, well, let's see what other testing companies do. And so I looked at McGraw-Hill. I think Indiana uses McGraw-Hill to write tests. And McGraw-Hill says, in a planar language, no single test can ascertain if a student has achieved well in school, blah, blah, blah. So you've really got the testing companies saying what we want to say to the legislators. And when I asked the legislators, after three minutes of being with them, did you know this? And they say to me every time, no, I did not know this. And then I go on, if I've got a few minutes left, and I tell them the damage that it causes and awareness with what the public thinks about our kids and our teachers. And I think it was brought out very clearly three weeks ago with the Orlando Sentinel and a My Word column, who wrote about the swan song for the FCAT. I don't know if you read that or not. It gave us basically 16 years of no credit, flat scores, flat scores. What are the Orange County District people slapping themselves on the back for? There's been no growth in 16 years. And that's because the test did exactly what it was supposed to do. It's supposed to always capture 40% to 50% of the kids into a fail zone. That's why it's not supposed to be used as a multiple measure, a single measure, excuse me. And that's why it's very important for our lawmakers, before they make the laws, to know that there are multiple ways that kids are learning every day, all 180 days. And I think that's what you're saying, Mrs. Hamilton. I hope to goodness it is, because I can't say it quite as eloquently as you can, but that's what I think they're trying to say. It's really nothing more than the testing companies themselves are saying. So I can't wait to see Ayers' disclaimer, because they probably have one. They probably tell us, don't use this the way it's not supposed to be used, or else you're taking a screwdriver and trying to hammer a nail in with it. It won't work. It'll break the screwdriver, and you won't get the nail in. Thank you.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a really, really valuable discussion, but I'm a little bit confused why we're having it at a regular board meeting and not a work session. And so when it started going this way, I was wondering if it would have been possible just to jump in and called the question and referred it to a work session, because you did that earlier. You talked about moving it to the committee, where we could have time, we could have input from the public. And so I think, at this point, you know, I'd like to call the question, and at the same time, ask you to refer what brought up, which was a very valuable discussion, but generally, we have these discussions at a committee meeting or a work session, and by the time we get to this policy level at a board meeting, you know, we're not having this kind of yin and yang going on. So I'd like to call the question, either we're going to vote it up and down, and then, and I certainly supported yours and Ms. Flynn's discussion, to send the rest of it off for further discussion, and prefer not to do it at an entire board meeting.
Okay, well, let me do this, to get us in a proper posture. Can I treat that as a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Because we're still on the consent agenda unless somebody wants to pull this off. Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
Ten seconds.
All right. Now, the question has been called, which also requires a second, is not debatable.
Second.
Second, okay. Everybody understand, the first vote we're going to take is on calling the question on the consent agenda. In other words, just calling it to a vote requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Okay. So we are now on the main question, which is to adopt the consent agenda. All right? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. All right, the consent agenda is adopted. Before we move on, I do want to go out of order unless somebody calls me on it, please don't. We did have one more speaker. I just got the card as you were making your speech. So as a courtesy to that member of the public attending our meeting, Regina Hellinger, Ms. Hellinger, welcome. And Ms. Hellinger, you'll have three minutes to address the board, name and address. And she's also going to speak on 4.02. I know we just passed it, folks, but I don't want to say no, because we moved.
Regina Hellinger, 2715, Runyon Circle, Orlando, Florida, 32837. Thank you. I know this has been a long discussion. I just want to say something from an educator's point of view. I'm listening to the conversation here, and I just want to make sure that everyone who's here and everyone who's watching on TV understands that when we say multiple measures, we're not talking about, or the conversation, I don't mean to say we, but it's not referring to having additional testing. You know, most recently, in my career, I was a gifted educator, and when we look at students qualifying for gifted, sometimes the test is biased against certain groups. And so we look at, how can we look beyond the test to truly identify students who are gifted, who deserve and need gifted services? And we look at multiple measures. It doesn't mean additional testing. It means looking at a variety of factors that give us a full picture of what a student is doing and what a student is capable of in the classroom. And that can include a portfolio, that can include report card grades, that can include specific things that we give them that allow to show their way of thinking that may not be addressed on a test. So I just wanted to provide the input, so that there's clarification, and that multiple measures does not mean additional testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hellinger. All right, Mrs. Gordon, did you still want to say anything? Okay. Ms. Flynn, do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask Ms. Hamilton to definitely send me the information that Mrs. Gordon was talking about. You and I can get together. And also, Mr. Chair, you had asked about the resolution on accountability in testing. That was passed on June 26, 2012. And that is the name of it, 2012 Resolution on Accountability in Testing. So if you just search for that on Board Docs, it'll pull up.
Thank you very much. I'll pull it up. All right. Good discussion. Ms. Hamilton, you handled that with great aplomb. So thank you for, actually, Ms. Hamilton, as a courtesy to you, there's an issue coming up that you're probably going to want to stick around for. Okay? So I didn't want you to leave and find out we addressed it afterwards. Okay? All right. Unless you're really just dying for ice cream, in which case, get some mint chocolate chip for me. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to report on?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just a couple of real quick items I want to highlight with regards to the legal department. I think I had a chance to introduce our newest hire that you all approved last board meeting, Laura Kelly, who comes from the University of Florida as a double Gator. Laura is here this evening, and I'd like to have her stand and be recognized. She's, comes with tremendous.
If she's a double Gator, she must be doubly brilliant.
Yeah. So she.
It's good to see a Seminole found the error of his ways.
We hire great talent here, no matter where they studied. So we were very impressed, not only with her academic credentials, but she's been with the same firm at Lakeland since her graduation. She had tremendous references there, as well as the fact that she applied herself and became board certified on her own volition in real estate. She will be working with Mr. Morris and his shop, as well as our legal department, to assist in what we expect will be a lot of furious activity with regards to ongoing concerns with real estate matters over the years. And I'm also proud to announce that three years ago, more or less, you approved what was then the first attorney that we added to our legal group outside of Eileen and John, and that was Sarah Corin. And she started off with us almost over three years ago as a staff attorney two and as an ESC director. On tonight's agenda, she was promoted to a staff attorney three. And many of you that have worked with Sarah know how brilliant she is at making sure that our organization stays clear and complies with very complex laws in an area that's difficult. I am also glad to say that she will be including additional responsibilities and duties in our department, branching out, because she's been able to manage the ESC issues so well. So I wanted to congratulate her and thank her for her devotion to the district over these past three years. So thank you, Sarah. And she is a UF and Nova grad, so she has UF in her heart as well, unfortunately, so.
Eventually, the Gators will take over that legal department. All right, thank you. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I mentioned earlier that we had a couple of snippets for you to view that our students have created around the Code of Conduct. The board chairman actually encouraged us, and board concur, that perhaps students bringing the message to other students would be more impactful. We had partnership on productions, actually through Rich Morrison with Florida Hospital came and talked to us, and they had just brought on General Mark Hurtling, General Hurtling. And he talked about their PR campaign, because they used enlisted folks to help convey to other enlisted individuals some of their rules around harassment and things that had become pretty common, and had excellent outcomes and great feedback. And so they helped us with the whole concept of having students to create it. You're going to see two, I believe, we have queued up. I will tell you, they've got, and I promise you, they are not going through step-by-step and page-by-page the entire Code of Conduct. They have picked out some frequent flyer-type issues. You're going to see two in just a moment here. They're also in queue for putting the electronics away, is the title of one, theft, and then another one on drugs and alcohol. But if the folks backstage are paying attention, you should see the two video clips that we have that are already prepared from the Code of Conduct, specific issues that they wanted to address, student to student.
Hi, Tommy.
Hey, DeQuan.
Have you ever heard of Safe Harbor? What does it mean?
Sure. Like if you forget you have your pocket knife, turn it over right away to a teacher or school employee.
A pocket knife?
Right. Or anything that could be used as a weapon.
But what if I saw a real weapon?
Don't touch it. Tell a school employee, or send a friend to get a school employee right away. If you touch it, you own it. So don't pick it up to show it to a friend.
What if I just remembered something? I brought my prescription sinus medicine with me. What should I do?
Tell a school employee right away. The reason for Safe Harbor is to keep all students safe. But if you're found with something, and there's already a search going on, then you could be suspended or expelled.
Keep yourself and your friends safe. Do the right thing.
Let's talk about cell phones and other electronic devices and the student code of conduct.
Unless you have a class assignment to take photos or videos, don't do it.
Taking pictures without permission is mentioned in the code of conduct, and posting photos or video on social media is definitely not okay. Taking a picture could lead to a 10-day suspension from school. Posting the picture on social media could lead to expulsion.
Harassment and cyberbullying have no boundaries. It doesn't matter that you're using a computer at home. If you're infecting another student or a school staff member, you will be suspended or expelled. So do the right thing.
"Do the right thing" is actually coined from that military campaign that General Hurtling brought to us to share with us. They've had a few others that had to have some additional editing, but we will be happy to share with you the ones that we think are most popular. Three more will be ready to share with you shortly. Secondly, I wanted to share with the board, I've talked to individual board members, but wanted to certainly share with you here publicly, as a communication being prepared to go out to principals, so we can get the information out to our parents. Question came up regarding what percentage EOCs would count for student grades. And so we have a recommendation for you, but let me just give you a little bit of background, and I've spoken to, I believe, everyone regarding this, but let me just give a little bit of background. What we have statutorily in 1008.22 parent 3 parent B is specific language that says we shall attribute 30% of a student's final course grade to their EOC and state-created EOCs. That is Algebra I, Algebra II, Biology, Civics. What that statute also said, and so we included those, we always adjust our student progression plan based on statutory requirements. So we included those. The statute also had a provision that says anything else that the commissioner comes up with in her provision for a state EOC shall also have the 30% requirement. And so after you approved your last pupil progression plan, I'm sorry, we call it student progression plan, now pupil is so antiquated, student progression plan, U.S. history was added. And so under the commissioner's authority, U.S. history is also now 30% of the final grade for the students, as required by state statute and commissioner's implementation schedule. So the question really is, what do you do about the locally created? Remember that list we had? State-required, state-created, and then there are locally, I'm sorry, state-required, locally-created. Those are hundreds and hundreds of tests that we've been creating with our teacher groups for every other subject area that is not assessed by the state. In the instance of the local assessments, they call them, still state-required, mind you, there is no language about a specific percentage to be used for the student's grade. In fact, it is purposely silent on the percentage. So there is no statutory language to insert into our progression plan. So we are facing, as are other districts, the question of how much, how will you account for those EOC exams in the student's final grades? And our neighbors and colleagues around the state have differing opinions about that. And the state, to date, has not given any specifics. So let me tell you what we found. Dade and Brevard said 0%. We think that's problematic for a couple of reasons I'll mention to you shortly. Seminole County says 20%. Hillsboro says 25%. Osceola and Palm Beach say 30%, just like the state exams require the 30%. So here's the problem. Let me mention the problem first, and then I'll tell you how we want to move forward. And because this is not required to be in our progression plan at this point, I really want the board to be aware of it, and certainly to give me your nod, because we've got to get some direction to both parents and to our principals. Here is what we believe is rational and fair to students, but also fair to our teachers. We have a concern, as some of our colleagues have mentioned as well, leaving it at 0% really puts our teachers at risk, because their VAM scores will still be based on whatever, and of course, assessment they have. And so our concern would be that a 0% essentially puts them in jeopardy of students not taking it seriously. And we used to call it Christmas treeing, just marking the document or turning the document in and not taking it seriously. 20% as Seminole County has agreed to sounds reasonable. It is some protection for our teachers that students will take it seriously, but it's also fair for students, because with 20%, essentially, when Brandon looked at the simulations, if you pass the course and failed the EOC, it would drop you one letter grade. If you went to 30%, then large numbers of students would suffer that one letter grade drop. So here's what, how we want to proceed, and certainly, although it's not codified in statute, we can make it more formal if it's the board pleasure in the future. Your code of, your pupil progression plan doesn't come out until like October, November. It has to go through 30-days advertisement, which is why we keep it strictly to statutory requirements. So here's what we're recommending, or how we'd like to proceed. Orange County Public Schools, we would prefer that for kindergarten through fifth grade, there is a 0% computation on student grades. We think, hopefully, there will be a legislative fix for this. We think it's problematic to try to do individual course, individual grades for kindergarten through fifth grade, so we'd like to keep that at 0%. Those teachers still have to have the measures, so we have to have something that we're going to count toward VAM. But we believe K through 5, our students are pretty compliant. They are not going to blow off the exam and think that it's worth nothing. We think they will still perform. So we'd like to keep that at 0% for trying to calculate. For secondary, middle through high school, we would like to have that at a 20% calculation for EOCs when it comes to the actual student grades in those courses, similar to some of our neighbors, and lower than most, lower than several, except for Miami-Dade and Brevard, where we think they are going to discover some significant issues with the 0%.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Gould.
I would assume that if we have the control now to put a practice in place, that we would also have the opportunity to shape it in the future.
Absolutely. That is correct, and much easier done if not taken through a significant progress, a process to be in the progression plan.
Okay. And so this sounds like a conservative approach, but still accomplishes the intent of the end-of-course exams to match. end-of-course exams to match a little bit better. So, I would be in favor of that as long as this is on the conservative side because I'd rather see us start more conservative on this right now because there is so much rolling out with the mandated end-of-course exams and some of the discussion we just had earlier about the standardized tests and give people that chance to kind of catch up than adding another thing that adds another, you know, burner that we don't even have on the stove top right now, another pot for the burner that's not even there. So, if we, and I agree that, you know, 0% probably doesn't help them in the long run. But I guess the 20% is about as conservative as you think we can go with it?
That's correct, Chairman.
Dr. Jenkins.
That's correct. And let me clarify too, because I hate to muddy the water. We need an entire work session on this. When it comes to the VAM scores and setting cut scores that are going to impact teacher pay-for-performance, that's something we work with our union on for setting the cut scores for the VAM score. They want to keep that separate. This is purely on calculating the student's grades, and we believe giving some weight to it will prevent our teenagers, at least, from taking the test very lightly and then impacting teacher VAM scores.
Ms. Caddell.
I heard you say that we were working on a legislative fix, or we were exploring a legislative fix. Can you talk about that a little bit more, what we're looking at?
Absolutely. Mr. Howard and I have had this discussion, and when talking with legislative staff members, they essentially thought somehow there was a misunderstanding that there was never an intention of having end-of-course grades at the elementary level because you don't have separate courses in elementary school. However, the language did not make that provision, nor did it exclude elementary schools. What I'm accustomed to is end-of-grade tests at that level rather than end-of-course. So, there can potentially be a legislative fix for the elementary level in the future. DOE is interpreting it that there are courses because we have minutes for reading, for math, for science, and so on, and that they will count those as courses for those teachers at the elementary level.
Can I follow up? You know, I've been pondering this, and when you have children that are in preschool and when they're coming into kindergarten, they tell you whether or not they're kindergarten-ready. And as we look at this, we've got parents that are used to that language. And would it, is there a way that you could do a readiness test really for the next grade? And here are, here are the things that a child is expected to have mastered before they move to the next level. And I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, but it seems like it's some language that many of our families would be used to with kindergarten readiness and as we're moving them through until we get to middle school and high school where it is end-of-course exams or, as we talked about last time, semester and final exams.
Dr. Jenkins.
Certainly, that's one potential solution. Some of the complexities have to do with students being in a school the following year that were instructed, at the beginning of a year that were instructed the previous year by those teachers. So, matching students who return and using those returning scores or readiness scores for those teachers could be problematic. The notion of an end-of-course exam or an end-of-course assessment is probably more practical rather than a readiness test. But I will tell you, I have no idea. I think we would try any pathway to somehow limit the impression and the impact that you have to have individual course exams at the elementary level. And so, we are certainly open to trying any avenue. Mr. Howard is certainly aware of both avenues as potentials for the future, and hopefully we'll have some listening ears with the legislature just to get that correction.
Well, and some of our parents are starting to speak out on it as, as the year is beginning and there's information out there. And one of the things that I hear is, you know, stop telling us it's Tallahassee. You know, they don't, they, they want us to somehow be able to miraculously fix it. But what is the appropriate venue so that the legislators and the Department of Education hear what the parents are saying? Because we're taking the brunt of something that, I don't know if their intent was to do what they've done, but they've absolutely done it.
Dr. Jenkins? Do you want to try to tackle?
I thought that was rhetorical.
I thought it was too. It's not really fair to you.
Chairman and Ms. Caddell, certainly, I think the valid point is we have to do a consistent job of communicating with our parents and certainly with the community at large, both the issue and our perceived solution. I do not think, I would not recommend to this board that they consider refusing to obey what is statutory at this point. As constitutional officers, we are required to uphold what is statutory. And so, I think our best venue is to make sure we communicate with our parents so they have a better understanding and then certainly advocate that there would be clarity in some of the legislative requirements or that legislative requirements would be changed. But I would hate to see us waste all of our energies and efforts behind trying to undo what is currently in the statutes. I think we have to help our teachers be realistic. We cannot pretend it doesn't exist because there is no reprieve on VAM and pay-for-performance. We are entering year four, and nothing has changed at this point. So, we have to be prepared, and we need to be practical regarding that. I think communication plans, and our PR folks have been working on communication plans to keep getting the word out through as many venues as possible to help our folks understand it, our parents and our community at large.
Ms. Moore.
At the risk of contradicting what I said the last time I spoke, I guess I want to pose it as a question first. When we have had different issues such as what is the lowest possible grade in grading systems, Dr. Jenkins, I'm assuming that most of this was driven at a staff level, and I'm trying to remember how much of that the board, you know, approved in terms of grading policies and procedures. And so, you're basically bringing us this, you know, as an item under the superintendent's report and asking us to ratify it. But my consternation is, you know, we do have community members here. There were community members that might have liked to have weighed in on this. And so, I guess I'm asking for why. Now, this, if this is traditionally how we've handled an issue like this, it comes straight from the superintendent for confirmation from the staff.
Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I'm not asking for ratification. I certainly would love to know if board members have individual heartburn over it. I've spoken with individual board members, but because it is not, there is no percentage in our statute at this time. We don't put, what we put in our pupil progression plan that does go through policy approval and 30-day advertisement and then public input like a policy, we don't put in the progression plan what is not in statute for a couple of reasons. Number one, because it's probably going to change shortly, and we need to be adept enough to make whatever adjustments might be required. But we have not, in the past, put in your progression plan what is not in policy. And so, go back to the grading issue. When we had that discussion, about 50% is as far as the elevator goes for Fs. We brought that just to share with the board. That's a grading practice. It is not codified in the progression plan. And so, I apologize if I was unclear. I was not looking for the board to take any action tonight. I certainly would love to have a nod of head that you understand that you are in consent with it, but your progression plan does not have to have this included because it's not in the statute.
Ms. Moore.
Well, with that being said, because it really is obviously an important issue, we had quite a lengthy discussion earlier, do you think it would be appropriate perhaps in last summer to have a work session, once we have data, to see how these numbers that you have come up with work out for the students and, of course, concern for the teachers with all of the testing? It'd be something we could look at and evaluation of it later.
Absolutely. We have a work session planned. I remember I promised you a mind-numbing session with all of the changes that have taken place. We are developing an entire work session on the entire accountability system and all of its changes. That is already queued up. We're looking for a date.
And Ms. Moore.
And I appreciate that. I guess what I'm asking is that maybe next summer, after we've gone through a whole year of it, I'm assuming that then you will look at the decision to have 0% for the elementary children and then the 20% for the middle and high school, just to see if it accomplished what you thought it did initially as we're preparing for this start of the year.
Okay.
May I respond?
Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
Absolutely. We are certainly willing to do that. The reason we need to move forward expeditiously is because teachers and parents will need to have some indication, but we can certainly look at it again at the end of the year. I would be willing to wager you there will be another change by then as well.
Okay. Well, and I just want to echo that. You know, this is, this is a tough issue, and I agree with a bit of your premise. And, Dr. Jenkins, I've struggled with, is this policy or is this operational? And to be very candid, and I'm not taking a legal opinion here, just an elected board member's opinion, it seems to verge awful close on policy to me because we're saying that it's 20% of your final grade. So, I think it would give you support and the administration support if at some point after we vet this and after you go through your teething pains, if we take up a formal vote to adopt this as our policy. And I'm not saying that we embed it in board policies, Mr. Rodriguez. I'm looking at you. I don't know that we need to go that level of putting it in our statutes, but I think there are members of the community who are looking to us to ratify this and don't want us to boot it and say it was a superintendent's decision. And if it were not the fact that we were mandating that it's 20% of the final grade for middle and high schoolers, I wouldn't feel that way. But as 20% of the final grade for middle and high schoolers, I think it would give you cover. I really do. And not that you need it, but frankly, I'd be more comfortable doing it that way as well. Did you want to address that?
You can certainly embed it in your progression plan. It is the opposite of what we put in the plan previously, and it makes it a very long process. It would be November before you could say, well, you know what? Let me back up for a second. You can certainly still go that route as long as we are still, as long as we are still instructing and sharing with teachers and parents at this point that that's the mark that we are aiming for.
I agree. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that we need to go as far as embedding it in our student progression plan, unless you think we do at that point. But I think that we would be well-advised as a board to actually take a motion and a vote on this at some point, not necessarily today, but at some point. And frankly, I don't know of anybody on this board who's going to disagree with your approach. I certainly agree with it wholeheartedly. I think it's a good balanced approach and a sound approach, so I want to thank you for coming up with it. I have a couple of questions, though. If a teacher treats the end-of-course exam in a non-mandatory end-of-course exam course, I don't know what to call it, but not Algebra, not History, not, you know, the ones where we can set the score. If they choose to treat the end-of-course exam, let me just say, in high school journalism as their final, and they choose to assign a higher percentage weight to it than 20%, is that within their discretion? And the reason I ask is, as a parent of a high school student, one of the things I've struggled with on this is frankly, my daughter has a number of finals that do count for 30, 40, 50% of the grade. And I could see many of our teachers saying, rather than give a separate final, I'm going to treat the EOC as the final, but I want it to continue to count 40% towards my student's final grade. Will that be permitted still?
So, our intention is that if you have an EOC that is your final, that there would not be a separate final exam by the teacher on top of the EOC, so that would be their final, and they would not be able to add additional weight to it or additional punishment.
Well, you just made my junior high school daughter very happy. So, the most her finals can count now is 20%. Okay. But that's going to be a sea change, board members. I don't know how many of you have, I know you have high school children now. I mean, you know, what's interesting about this conversation, I cannot emphasize this enough, I don't know if you agree, Ms. Gould, but I'll have to go home and check with the real expert on education in my household, my wife and my daughter, but I am pretty confident that many of her finals last year in high school counted 30 to 35 to 40% of her grade. So, that's, that's, that's going to be a big break for many of our high school students. Other suggestion I wanted to make as we go forward with this, I think the communication is so very, very important, and this may be a surprising suggestion, but elementary parents in particular, but all parents love to know, especially engaged parents, what's expected of their student at the end of the year. If there's a way that we can start to really noodle on how we simply communicate what the end-of-course exams will test in 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th grade, I know a lot of ambitious mom and dads who would like to be working with their kid on those issues throughout the year. And it's always been tough with the Sunshine State standards and FCAP because they're so voluminous and so difficult to penetrate. So, I don't know if that's possible. And last, just editorial comment I'm going to make is, this has come up in conversation for me ironically about a half dozen times in the last week, weekend and a half. And it's funny, when you sort of have an elevator conversation with somebody about an issue, as you're talking and as you're doing it over and over, things occur to you. And I've learned to lead when I talk to people, and I think this is an important point, is we consider our communication plan. And I don't think you can say this, and I don't think Dylan or Communications Department can, but this is not part of the state's accountability system. That's the first thing I've come to telling parents, other than the end-of-course exams and Algebra, History, tell me out here, which ones do we have currently in place? Algebra, History, English, Geometry and Bio?
Biology, Civics, U.S. History.
Yeah. Other than those five or six, it is not part of the accountability system. And that shocks parents when I tell them that because I say, you have to understand something. The entire end-of-course exam requirement in every course from Journalism to PE to Ceramics to 4th graders to 2nd graders, it's part of the merit pay system. It's being done simply to try to implement, and I don't know, I'm really editorializing, a very flawed merit pay plan. And when people hear that, I don't know if y'all have had this experience, when you put it that way to them, the first thing they say is, well, what do you mean? And the next thing I say is, of course, you have to understand, the number one criticism of merit pay is teachers saying, I'm being awarded my pay based on other teachers' work, not what I've taught. So, the legislature's reaction, while I don't like it, has been a very logical reaction. It's been to say, well, fine, school districts and teachers' unions, if you're going to take that as you're out, then we're going to require you to create a test for every single subject taught, so we no longer have to endure the criticism that our pay is based upon other teachers' work. So, I don't like it. I want to make that very, very clear. I think it's a flawed system, but I think when we talk to our constituents, we need to start making sure they understand this is all being driven by the merit pay plan that the legislature has adopted. And I'm glad you're here, Tammy, and State and your colleagues. I suspect as a public school parent that 99% of the parents out there don't have a clue that their kids are going to be given an end-of-course exam from kindergarten up until 12th grade in every single subject that they're taught. So, at some point, Dr. Jenkins, I hope that we utilize Dylan to come up with some clear, simple heads-up type communications. This is on the way to get to the PTAs, and I'm going to ask y'all a favor to ask you to get that to all your member PTAs because I have a feeling we're going to be enduring an avalanche of calls and questions and angry parents come April when all of a sudden their kid's sitting for an end-of-course exam, especially the middle school kids or whatever, where it's not as common as high school to have a final and it's 20% of their grade. So, we just got to get the word out there. Mr. Roach.
Well, it's already beginning for me. I'm having coffee with a parent tomorrow who has an EOC concern with one of her kids in high school, and I just learned that we have a parent in central Florida that left public school and went to private school because she refused to have her kids take EOC exams in kindergarten. So, it's coming. And I think, listening tonight to this, and I'm going to take the high road on this because I think many of you know I have real strong feelings about these things anyway. But I think that what we're talking about right now is going to just create, and you said it first, Mr. Soblet, thank you for that, is going to create so much confusion. I mean, I'm sitting here trying to figure it out just so I can communicate it to parents. But when you communicate changes to parents, it's usually more effective if you can, if you can communicate with logic attached to it, rationale attached to it, you know, educational rationale. And then people buy it very quickly. If you can't attach logic to it, then it does nothing but either infuriate parents but either infuriate parents or confuse them more. And I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed with, and I don't like to throw them all under the bus, but with the legislature, because I feel like when we have asked legitimately and diplomatically for local control over the years, I believe that this is an example of, well, let me just give you some local control. And I hate that kind of stuff. I don't like to engage in that, and I don't like to accuse people of that. But that's really what it feels like. It feels like, well, let's just give you this one, buster. Well, to me, look, the EOCs that Brevard County is doing with 0% with their high school kids, tell me, the kids aren't competing for University of Florida admittance on GPAs. They're not. If I apply my kid to University of Florida and you apply yours, and there's one slot left, will they go to the GPA and look at it? If they do, then Brevard County has a 0% end-of-course exam weight. Is that right, Dr. Jenkins? If they have a 0% and my kid's got a 20%, and my kid stubbed his toe on the EOC and this kid did two, his weight doesn't really count toward that. It impacts the GPA, does it not?
So let me answer your question on two levels. Number one, we wouldn't have the same EOC anyway. The chances are Brevard has some kind of final exam for their courses, for their students, like we used to have our teachers giving final exams. Chances are they have some indicator that they're using in high school-level courses, like a final exam. The difference in whatever weighting, like the chairman mentioned, said a minute ago, he had teachers who were counting it as 40% of the grade, they're probably doing things independently. What Brevard has said is that their locally-developed EOC will not count anything. That does not mean they're not using whatever teachers have used in the past for their final exams.
Kind of hard to compare district to district, is my point, Mr. Roach.
And I don't see that as clear as you do, because as a teacher, I created final exams. And it was created with total transparency. I gave a final exam on everything that I felt was important in my science class. And I taught them that, and we reviewed that the day before the test. And when we gave that test, every member in that class ought to have been prepared with no curveballs thrown at them. But the end-of-course exam is not the same thing. It's designed by another set of teachers with a very similar format, as I understand it, on how an FCAT or a high-stakes test is designed, with challenging and average questions, with built-in failure rates for those kids. And that makes it more challenging if that Brevard County kid takes a test like that that has zero weight to it versus an Orange County kid who has 20% weight. That might make the difference between a GPA of 4.0 and 3.85. And if it did, and I'm not criticizing us, because I think you've had a bad law and you've made it less bad. I give you great credit for it, and I thank you for bringing it to me. I don't know how you could fiddle with it any more than you did. But I think what, again, the state has done is they have said with this local control, this is one that probably shouldn't have been local control. There are some things that should be centralized, decision-making and centralized laws, and there's some that... But that spins around common sense. And if you don't have common sense, then you're trying to put a square peg into a round hole. And that's what it feels like to me, not to mention VAM scores for teachers, which has never had any kind of validity in US history. And we continue to tie their pay, performance pay in a cognitive skill to a test score. So I'm disappointed in three aspects. Certainly, I commend you for what you're trying to do, because I do see what you're trying to do. But I wanted y'all just to know that that's how I feel about this whole thing. It's not good education. We're making bad decisions. And that's why the last thing I want to say is, I firmly believe that a legislative platform ought to be input to legislators as here's the laws that are working for us and here's the laws that are hurting us. There's no one that I know of that has said, we're going to break the law. It's, but these aren't good for us and here's why. And that's what I think we've got to remember when we can convince ourselves that these are things that don't really, really benefit kids or teachers or our public. That's my final say on that.
Ms. Flynn? I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins.
Yeah, I wanted to make just one clarification as well, to make sure everyone's clear on a point. Miami-Dade and Brevard still have to have the EOCs. They will still be what have to be calculated for their VAM scores. They have just elected not to make it a percentage of the student grade. I want to make sure everyone's clear on that as well.
Ms. Flynn?
So those students could actually be taking two end-of-the-year exams. I think when we roll out some more information to the parents, one of the things I would be interested in seeing is the most recent student progression requirements. But as you said, this is going to take the place, these end-of-course exams of final exams. So, Dr. Jenkins, I would like to know, and this can come after the meeting, not now, but what the requirement for final exams was for students. Because I know, you know, maybe if they were taking an art class, maybe there wasn't a final exam. Or maybe if they were taking an elective, there wasn't a final exam, or something like that. So I just wanted to see what the requirement, so I could compare in my mind how this will change. Because if this is just substituting a final exam, you know, the big impact, as you said, is merit pay. But for the student, it might not be that big of a change. So that's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson?
I just want to point out, because we had this conversation just last week at our board meeting, too, that my child will too be excited not to have two tests. I thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for making that just one test. But I do want to point out, these tests were not created by his teachers. Every test he took this year, whether it had 30, 40% of the grade, his teacher created that test, and it wasn't usually encompassing the entire year's worth of learning. It was one semester or one quarter or something. So it is a different test, even though it's only going to be 20%. And I'm thankful it's not more than 20%. But let's keep in mind that it is not created by their teacher, and it is encompassing the entire year's worth of standards. I have a question. Obviously, after the test gets administered, the test that we created this year at the end of the year, we will have seen it for the first time. Will we have to every year change it the way... Remember how FCAT made such a big secrecy about the FCAT every year? Are we going to have to recreate all of our end-of-course exams every summer?
Chairman, it shouldn't be that extensive, because you have a group of teachers working to create test bank items. And so you can shuffle, reshuffle, and have version A and B of various tests. There's some scientific strategies around test creation. So they wouldn't have to start from square one to create an entirely new test each year. Usually what you do is, because you're working with groups of teachers, they create several test items, and they don't know which ones will actually show up on the initial test or on the second year's test.
Okay. So after this year's, teachers see the test at the end of the year that their students take and have a clue. Are they given any opportunity to see the test ahead of time?
No, it's a secure test.
But after they see it this year, they'll then have a clue?
So it's a secure test, so teachers shouldn't be, just like with FCAT, they wouldn't be standing over the shoulders and reviewing the test.
Okay.
Or photocopying it.
Well, I wouldn't think they'd be photocopying it.
It's a secure test. It would follow the same protocol.
Okay. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for not requiring the students in Orange County to take two different tests, especially in the high school level.
And I want to make sure we're clear as well. If their course has an IB exam or an AP exam, that counts as their... For those courses, we didn't have to create a separate EOC.
I was going to ask, thank you for pointing that out, too.
Yeah. In fact, last Friday, according to our MOU, we sent out that entire directory that says, if you teach this course, here is the exam. We made that available to board members as well, and we'll make it available to the general public. So if you had something that's a nationally distributed test, such as an AP exam, that counts for your EOC.
Okay. So, okay, my question on that, because you don't usually find out that student's grade on their AP test or IB test till after the school year is ended. How's it going to count towards 20% of their grade?
I believe we delay some of those grades. We've had to do that in the past.
What's that?
I believe we've had to delay some of those grades in the past.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's not new. That issue came up before.
So how do you do that when they have to graduate? Graduation's June 3, or whatever, and AP scores don't come out till July? How does that...
But that's always been the case. AP scores don't come out.
I understand. So if it's now 20% of their grade, it was 20% of their grade before, now that it's 20% of their grade, how are they going to, how are we going to know their grade for the year to make sure they graduated?
See, I think that issue's come up before. I believe we just... Dr. Jarrett, didn't we distribute those grades after the fact?
But did the AP exams prior to this count towards their grade in the class?
No, but we didn't have end-of-course...
Right. That's what I'm saying. I think this is a new situation to be in, because it didn't count towards whether they graduated or not.
Come down to the microphone, Dr. Tovine.
And while Dr. Tovine's walking to the microphone, I'll say my other... I am thankful, too, like we discussed last week, that we will have open house, possibly as a chance to share a lot of this EOC information with our families. So...
And we will start putting it out tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Fine.
Yeah, thank you. We met this afternoon. We had that very same conversation. And so we tossed it back and forth, and it based on the one decision is, we didn't want the kids to have to take two tests. And so we were thinking that with the AP exams, and the rigor there already, that enough to us, you know, fit what the need was for there, and that would be used for the teacher's evaluation. So in that case, if the, an additional final exam was going to be administered by the teacher, just kind of the way they're doing it now, is what we were thinking in that case. And that's the way you were drafting it in the memo.
So students that have AP courses will have two exams. They'll have the AP test and their teacher's.
I'm not sure that the AP teachers are given final exams now. I think we were leaving it the way they do it now.
So they won't have 20... It won't count towards 20% of their...
That's the way we were...
So take more AP classes.
Well, we felt like already they had to make the three. You know, there were other requirements there that made it tougher for kids already. And so we were trying to weigh what was fair and right for kids. We were writing that up today. That was the recommendation.
And let us find out as well what other districts are doing on that one. Because essentially, if the AP, if the AP exam counts as their end-of-course, that is still the calculation for VAM. The question is whether or not you ought to just go ahead and release their grade without waiting on AP scores in particular. We'll get you an answer on that.
Thank you.
Couple of points I want to make in closing. Nobody else has queued up. Number one, I pulled up the resolution from 2012, and you know, I want to go back to that topic just on one quick point. It does say, it does say in there, quote, revise the accountability system to include data from multiple forms of assessment and limited standardized testing to reflect student learning gains and identify learning deficiencies. So again, we debated and deliberated this issue ad nauseam when we did the resolution two years ago. And many of the criticisms have been leveled tonight are addressed in the resolution, specifically that one, to allow other forms of assessment. You know, I also want to make something clear. And you know, I sit up here, and I think I speak for most of us on this board, or some of us. We sit up here and, you know, it's turned into a long meeting, as it should, because this is an important topic, over an issue that we have little to no control over. Now, there are those who feel very, very strongly that we should be taking a more proactive role in it. There are different approaches to how to deal with policy issues. Some of the approaches that are advocated by some, frankly, I'll just be very, very blunt about it, I don't agree with. I don't think you can thumb your nose at state law. I don't think I have that prerogative. I don't think you can thumb your nose on the policy decisions that the state has made. I will also say, and I feel compelled to say this, because these conversations always pain me, because the depth of the opinions are so strong by some that it gives the impression that all board members hold those opinions. And all board members do not hold uniform opinions on these subjects. And I will share with you, when I first got elected and went to Florida School Boards Association, I thought I would be in a very distinct, very small minority in my support of the accountability system, in my support of merit pay, in my support of other issues that many school board members vehemently oppose. And I was pleasantly surprised to find, and I don't want to suggest it's a majority, but probably 30 to 35% of school board members hold similar views as I do. I've also been very pleasantly surprised, I don't want to make crystal clear, I am not speaking for Dr. Barbara Jenkins, but in my conversations with superintendents around the state, many of the superintendents of this state and professional educators also support the accountability system and also support some form of merit pay. I do not like the way merit pay has been implemented in this state. I do not like end-of-course examinations in every subject. I think we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. But I will tell you, it's been found to be politically untenable, the way I would do merit pay. And I say this all the time to audiences when I speak to them. If I were a king for a day and could implement a merit pay system, it would be identical to the private sector. We would give every principal at all 187 schools a raise pool. We would say to those principals, X percent, 20%, I'm just making up numbers arbitrarily to make my example, 20% of your teachers can get 4% raises, 70% of your teachers can get 3% of your raises, and 10% of your teachers can get 2% raises. Because that's the way it's done in most private corporations and in private sector. Managers and supervisors have a raise pool, and they have limits on who can get the 4% raise or the 5%, the 3 and the 2. Of course, the reaction of the organized labor movement for teachers is, well, then principals are playing politics and they're playing favoritism with their teachers. And my reaction is always a shrug and say, guess what? Welcome to the real world. Work for IBM, you better make sure your manager and your boss likes you. You're in the US military and you're a captain, you better make darn sure that your commanding officer, whether lieutenant, colonel, or colonel, likes you, because all it takes is one bad performance evaluation and your career's scuttled. Even in the federal civil service, that's the way merit pay is done. If your supervisor doesn't like you and you get a bad performance evaluation, your career has been impacted. And it's your job as an employee to make sure that your immediate supervisor approves of the job you're doing. All that being said, that's never going to pass in this state. So the legislature is slowly but surely backing in and trying to create a merit pay system that meets every criticism. And it's become almost like that game we used to play when we were kids, where you took the contraption and the ball, and you added different pieces to it. And by the time you got done with it, mousetrap, you almost didn't recognize it. And it's broken, and the end-of-course system is broken. But I want to make something also very clear, and then I'll step down. I do believe in the accountability system, and I don't believe what we were doing in this state for 40 years before the accountability system was implemented in 1998 and fully implemented in 2000 worked. And I'm not basing that on opinion, I'm basing that on objective data. And those who would suggest that our test scores haven't improved and our performance as the state haven't improved are frankly not looking at cold, hard data. On national norm reference standardized tests, we have made virtually more progress than any other of the other 50 states in the District Columbia, on especially our Latino populations and the rise in standardized test scores, and in closing the minority achievement gaps between not only our Latino populations, but our high-poverty populations and our African-American populations as well. We have gone from consistently having test scores and being ranked in the bottom quartile of the country as a state public school system, to consistently being ranked in the top 15 or 20 states in the country. And that brings bemused smiles by some, because they question the measures and all that. But you know what? The lifeblood of a public education system is measured by the reputational quality of that system, and whether parents feel confident that their children are going to get a rigorous, good-quality education and trust us with their children's education. And that's no more true today. It's even more true today with charter schools. And I always tell this anecdotal story, and y'all on the board have heard me tell it a million times. What was wrong with the old system is we did just trust and it didn't work. And my personal anecdote is, I went to University of Florida, took four courses, 12 hours. I dropped one and got two Ds and a C, and pulled a 1.7 GPA my first semester at the University of Florida. And that's because for four years of high school, I'd slid through high school on brains and guile, and I never had to study or work hard in high school before. and guile and had never had to study or work hard in high school before. I don't think that's possible today. I think our students coming out today are well-prepared to succeed in college and hit the ground running. In fact, if anything, I think that college sometimes is even easier for them in the amount of rigor and the amount of studying that they have to do. I don't want to go back to the old days, and I think the numbers don't lie. So thank you, board members, for indulging me in this little speech. But I want to make clear, I do believe in accountability. I don't like how it's been implemented. I don't find, as some would suggest, that 100% of parents share the views that accountability is a bad thing. I'm a parent of three public school students. I find that parents are almost evenly split on it. In fact, if anything, I think more parents support it. And I will tell you, when you're out there and you're speaking to the community as a whole, the support for the accountability system in Florida is almost overwhelming. So when we're asked to take these positions and to be aboard, to go out there and fight against accountability, which is what comes across, fight against standardized testing, fight against merit pay. I know I have a lot of very politically astute people up here at this board, and I can see by some expressions in your face, that's not what the general public believes. They believe in most of those concepts. How we're implementing them, I'm not always happy with. I think it's flawed. But sometimes the views expressed up here are not the views that I share, and I just want to make that very, very clear. Mrs. Robinson.
I had another question. What about half-year classes, like one semester? Like last year, my son had World Religions, and it was just the first half of the school year. Is there an EOC for that?
Yes.
Okay. So in that situation, if he takes World Religions the first half and Debate the second half, he has two EOCs. Okay, thanks.
All right, we're in committee reports. Communications, Ms. Moore. No? Legislative, Ms. Flynn? Anything further?
No, but I did pass out the federal priorities, which is a repeat from last year. But I did pass that out. And there's some lovely posters in the hallway, so.
Well, folks, I think that's it. Anything else to go to the order? We have an executive session upstairs immediately after. We are adjourned.
Mr. Chair, just real quick, I just wanted to comment that we had on the agenda tonight, the report from the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. So please, we do get a chance, please review that. I want to thank the committee members this year really did a yeoman's job of taking what has been, in the previous years, a two-page report and putting a lot of thought and careful attention to including their comments, not without some deliberation and even some dissension, but eventually they got to some consensus. And so that report you see before you is a final product. At the good suggestion of Ms. Gordon, we're going to bring them back in September for a recognition. We're trying to coordinate the dates, but it looked like the second meeting in September, and we need to coordinate that with you, Mr. Chair. But just wanted to thank, if you have them and you know who they are in your committee, please thank them for their hard work.
All right. Thank you for that, Ms. Roach. Anything else to go to the order? Ms. Flynn?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, one of the items that, I certainly didn't bring this up the first time, I think it was Board Member Robinson, but I would like for us to review our policy for EPIPens. I'd like for us to have a work session, if we could, because I continue to get more information. You see the ads on TV, so I'd like to bring that up. I think Mrs. Robinson brought that up to begin with first. And also, in my neck of the woods, you know, there is the controversy on the Osceola Expressway extending into Orange County, and we have a new school that will be built somewhat nearby. And I have residents asking how we feel about it. And certainly, what I've been told by facilities and planning, that it will not impact the construction of our school. But parents are concerned about the pollution aspects. They pull down, you know, they Google effects of pollution from highways on schools. And so I just wanted to see if maybe we could receive some more information about how we or the state looks at that impact on nearby schools, just so that we have that information.
Do you just want staff to do that, or are you asking for more of a formal presentation?
Well, I don't think we need a formal presentation, but I think if I could receive it, and then maybe if the rest of the board could receive that information, and then we could take it from there, whether we need to have a formal presentation.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. We'll see everybody upstairs.